Good morning and welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting, June 28, 2021. We enjoy having all of you with us this morning. We will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here today on a beautiful summer morning. Thank you for our children being out during the summer, for our families enjoying vacation, and for the work with these folks to try and make the best decisions for all of Fort Mill. In his name we pray, amen. Okay. Council, you have been provided the minutes of the June 14 Town Council meeting. Any changes, deletions, or modifications?
Here none.
All right. Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone with a public comment this morning?
No mayor.
All right. So we will then begin with presentations. Presentation number one, Downtown Jam, Steve Tolson with Amore Artis. Do we have Steve on video?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. We got you up early today, didn't we?
Yeah. I actually had to take my girlfriend to the airport this morning, so yeah, I was wide awake early.
Well, good. Well, thank you for joining us. We're excited to hear your presentation.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Um, yeah, we're looking, I guess it's been about two years since we've done this due to COVID. So our last jam that we had was October of 2019, but we're looking to kind of rekindle the spirit of the Main Street jams. So I just got a quick presentation, don't want to spend too much time, or waste too much of y'all's time. As you guys know, we've had seven successfully private, successful privately funded jams in the past. We've also worked with the town to help host some of the strawberry jams and some of the events for Fourth of July. We tend to have about 30-plus local artisans and vendors. Our average attendance, it's really hard to gauge, but just based on Facebook check-ins and stuff, we had, we estimate around 2,000 to 2,500 people per event. And then obviously, we, a portion of the proceeds of each one of these events goes back to charity. So every event is tied independently to a charity as well. Um, we've got four proposed events for 2021. The August 7th, we'll be working with eight over nine, or wanting to work with the Eight or Nine Foundation, kind of end of summer, I'd say summer, more like school year, summer, as school will start a week late after that, I believe. The 25th of September, doing some sort of Oktoberfest-style jam, which is actually our most successful one in the past. We found that the themes really work well with everyone, so we're going to kind of keep that going with a Oktoberjam for Halloween. And then in November, try to do something on Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Good choices.
Um, the schedule of events, we've got two different setups for the kind of early-season jams and the later-season jams. The earlier ones, we would like to operate them from essentially have the setup from, or close Main Street by 1:00 p.m., have the setup from 1:00 to 3:00, operate the events for about six hours, which we found is a good time to, timeline to have kind of either two bands or a DJ and then a band, a little bit of break in the middle, and then a breakdown from 9:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then for the later-season jams, as we're losing daylight, to try to keep these events more focused to daylight times, we would propose to close down Main Street by 10:00 a.m., set up between 10:00 and 12:00, operate the events from 12:00 to 6:00, and then break down from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is just a proposed map. It's very similar to ones we've used in the past. My girlfriend was able to help me here as well to make it, I've hand-drawn a lot of these in the past, but this one's a little more modern, using some good digital computing tools. So I don't know if there's any questions on this, but we've got loaded arrows for loading in. You can see where the vendors are lined up on either side of the street. It looks like I, it's either not showing up properly, or the green area on this short side of the street is blocked off, but vendors on both sides of Main Street. We are proposing to try to use the parking lot adjacent to the police station as kind of like an event space. So for the Eight or Nine Foundation, we're talking about using that for a cornhole tournament that they were able to raise a tremendous amount of money for two years ago, the last time they were able to do it. Stage down at the bottom end of Main Street, restrooms off behind Hobos, and then we'll focus on food trucks more at the top end of Main Street to kind of, I think we've talked, I've talked about this in the past, but again, it's been a while. We try to spread everything out as best we can, so like food on one side, concert on the other side. Therefore, it folk, it highlights the entirety of Main Street so that hopefully the local merchants, no one feels left out, if you will. That was the red area that I was talking about, the, the kind of events area, the parking lot adjacent to the police station. And we've got some plans to try to use it. Some of this stuff is, it's like a chicken or egg scenario. You want to make sure that the events are approved before you put too much effort into planning how to use different areas. But we know for the August 7th event, the Eight or Nine Foundation would like to have a cornhole tournament in that space. In September, we want to have some sort of like fall-specific market set up there. And for the Halloween event, we'd like to have a, we're working with Springs Farm to possibly have some sort of small little hay maze, like a children's area. And then for the Small Business Saturday, given that it's also leading into Christmas season, some sort of Christmas-specific market in that area. This is just to have food truck locations. In the past, when working with the fire marshal and the police, there's been some different recommend, different people have had different input at different times about where the food trucks should go. So kind of listed in order, the upper part of Main Street, as I have on the map, would be our primary location, but for some reason, that needs to change. We have that parking lot that we could use adjacent to the police station if needed. And then we've also had food trucks on Confederate Street in the past. So this is just kind of highlighting a couple of different areas where we could have food trucks when we start working on the event with the marshal. Additional like family activities, we're trying to, again, we're trying to keep some, have some themed events at each jam. We'll have contests and live music on the stage, and then we're proposing some events and games in that Fort Mill Police Department parking lot. I wanted to just highlight, we don't, we're trying to figure out and navigate, the COVID, post-COVID world is a little bit different. Things feel like they're coming back to normal, but at the same time, there's still a lot of people that aren't as comfortable with being close or touching things. And so we have no plans at this time to have like the family or kids tent that we've had in the past, where there's, you know, painting or like little kids' games. There have been like breastfeeding stations for women, kind of like family-safe fun tents. We're not planning that at the moment because of the COVID, like post-COVID environment, but we're, may incorporate some of that into later jams as we kind of feel out the public and see how people are responding and what they're looking for. I think that's actually the end of the presentation, too. So if you guys have any questions, let me know. We're just looking to try to have, bring back some, I wouldn't say Main Street's lost its life, we're looking to bring back some life with some downtown events and really celebrate the ability to go out again.
We're excited about that, too. Your plans look very nicely pulled together. Council, do you have questions, comments for Steve?
The only comment I got is, if you're going to close Main Street at 1:00, you have a hard time getting any cars off there that it's already parked. Is there any plans on closing it, and no parking on Main for that day during the event?
Yeah, Davey, Chris, what would be our?
We typically, for events like such as this, we shut down Main Street, all the parking on Main Street before 6:00 a.m. So that we can ensure there will be no cars.
No cars in the way?
Correct.
And I know we've got Jakana doing a presentation on the, later on, but my question also is, do we have any concern with overlap of the farmer's market activities?
Yeah.
That are going on at the same time?
Yes.
And that's not necessarily Steve as much as his staff, so we can wait until Jakana comes?
We actually believe it works well together with the timelines we have for our farmer's market, because as the market's ending, everyone there can actually relocate toward Main Street to that, that activity. So we think it'd work well together.
Except for the fall market, correct?
The fall market will still, the hours for it will just blend in an hour or two. So it gives that, anyone coming from one event may travel to the next event and back and forth just to see what's going on. So you're going to add more foot traffic to the Fort Mill area depending on which event they plan to go to, and then they'll say, they'll see the other event, and so I'm sure they'll look their way up there to see what it looks like.
So there's no concern about having enough vendors for both?
I don't think there's a concern with that.
And I am glad to hear we're not dead on where food trucks are going to go, that, you know, I think spreading this out as much as possible, especially in post-COVID situations, trying to, yeah, maybe even putting the food trucks on where the farmer's market is, or Confederate Street, or Academy Street, or, you know, in a different parking lot, but just spreading out. Because Steve, one of the things, because you've had so much success and merchants have had so much success, it's just the traffic on Main Street itself is hard to walk through. It, you know, Oktoberfest, I remember, you know, it was crowded, there were a lot of people in restaurants. I just think as much as we can spread out the footprint and make Main Street downtown area a little bit wider, it will help us with this. So I look forward to seeing what we're able to do with it. But thank you, Steve, for bringing it to us.
I appreciate, I appreciate the planning that's gone into this. The execution previously was very good. Everybody look forward to those events, and I appreciate the effort put into this.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions before we let Steve have an actual breakfast?
[laughing]
All right. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank y'all. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. There are no old business items this morning, so we will move directly into new business item number one, a resolution to appoint and commission Tamaris Jones as a code enforcement officer for the property, for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Fort Mill. Our subject matter is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Second.
Okay. Chris?
Yes, Mayor, Council, the first item and the second item, that's our former code enforcement officer and our new code enforcement officer. So these resolutions would allow Tamaris to continue operating as a code enforcement officer, even in his new position as building inspector. And then the second item would be to allow our new code enforcement officer to properly serve as a code enforcement officer.
All right. Any questions for Chris? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number two, a resolution to appoint and commission Christopher Ray as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Fort Mill. Again, it's Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number two. Second.
All righty then. I'm assuming this is identical, as you mentioned previous. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number three, 2021 Downtown Jam Resolution, a resolution designating Main Street, Tom Hall Street to Academy Street as the site of a public festival on Saturdays, August 7th, September 25th, October 23rd, and November 27th, 2021, from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. on August 7th and September 25th, and noon to 6:00 p.m. on October 23rd and November 27th, in which alcoholic beverages may be consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment. Jakana Hester is our presenter. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number three. Second.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yeah, we are making a recommendation to, for the Downtown Jam Resolution, to accept this. Steve has got a well-prepared plan, and it's going to be very much like in jams past, and we just ask for Council to approve this resolution.
Any questions for Jakana? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business item number four. Thank you, Jakana. New business item number four, utility connection requests for property located outside of town limits. This is Davey Broom. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number four. Second.
Motion in a second. Davey?
Yes, Mayor. We, the town has been approached by a property owner on Legion Road that is requesting to tap into the Fort Mill water system. They are in, located outside of the town limits of Fort Mill. The water line actually serves Sandy Point Neighborhood in that area. So it is in very close proximity to their property, just across the street. They have agreed to all of the costs associated with tapping the line, with the capacity fees for the service line, and have even signed an agreement, an annexation agreement, should they, their property become contiguous to the town limits. It's not contiguous at this time, so it will be in the future, should it ever actually become contiguous. They've gone through every step that we've asked them to go through and free pay all of the fees. So they have asked that we bring this before you to see if you would allow them to tap into our water system. And I'm sorry, and there is no sewer in that area, it is water-only, sewer services. So they would actually have a, they're on a sewer system.
I think it's important to note, we do serve others outside of the town that are not inside the town limits.
That's correct.
All nations, all nations.
Right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. If, just more precedence that we're setting, and yes, I understand, we've already done this, or have agreements with this, that were done in the past, but if we do this for this one homeowner, what's the likelihood, or have we been approached by others to do this? Yeah, I think of neighborhoods that are, developers are often coming to us, looking for basically just that, the utility side of things. How often has this been done in the past?
It's, it's not a regular occurrence, pretty rare, when you, especially when, you know, the annexation covenant is the, usually the sticking point with some other request, if not willing to, they don't want to be annexed, they just want to take advantage of our utility services. For this, you know, they would be paying outside rate, which is considerably higher than the inside rate for if you live inside of town limits. So that, that's another reason we don't get a lot of requests from outside customers, because it is a higher rate than what they would typically pay if they lived inside of town limits. And when they start weighing the cost of a well versus outside service, they generally, more times than not, go with the well.
Okay. And this would not be, any of the connection would not be at a cost to the town? The requester is paying for all of the work necessary to connect to our system?
That is correct. It's a real cost to the town.
[laughing]
And in saying that, there are times where if the, whenever, if it's inside the town limits and a road has to be open, if it's, we may step in and they'll pack the road back in, but we'll asphalt the road so that it's done to a certain specification.
So the extension of this line, I understand they're going to pay for it, putting it in, but the maintenance going forward for it would then be on the town?
It would be on the town and to the major.
To the major, yeah.
The majors.
So there is a?
They just can't get, get like a well, I guess. I'm just asking. I've never, this is kind of a one-off normally?
Yeah, and this is a, that's a good question. I think there's the option for the well and for this site, and it's a smaller piece of property.
Yeah.
So I think the well location, from my understanding, is actually another adjacent property.
Uh, okay. They're probably too close to the city town. Mm-hmm. So just talk me through that. So the property that's shaded, that's the town, and then there's a house, and then the road, and then the house at where?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so if we do not approve, they will not have access to water? Is there currently a home on this property?
I think they still have access to a well, they would have to work out an agreement for adjacent properties.
There's not currently a home on the property. They're doing all this to essentially be able to.
Gotcha. And?
Like.
Okay. So we're not keeping somebody without service? Okay. And then legally, has our attorney reviewed all of this, and we're good?
He rejected you about the annexation agreement, so we've gone through, like we've had in the past with all of that process. So imagine that had to be viewed at some point, for ten years.
Any further questions? The motion on the table is to approve new business item number four. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. We will now move into information and discussion. Our first information and discussion item is capital projects update. Davey Broom, thank you, Davey.
Yes, ma'am. So our capital projects are coming along. I'm excited to say that the Walter Mall Lashap Park project is, we're down to just a few items remain, which includes the amphitheater site. As you can see on photos, it is, it's really moving along pretty well. The roof is now over 50% installed, and this is the wood portion of the roof. The, the final covering of the roof will be metal, and it is still anticipated to arrive. It may not arrive by the actual September timeframe, but the, the roof is there now. You see the ceiling from the inside, and it's the wood portion that will have a protective sealant covering, and then you'll have a layer of the metal on top of it. So the photo to the right of someone is a drawn photo from straight ahead, gives you the outline of the amphitheater itself, and what it looks like out in front. So the projected timeline for the completion of this, possibly minus the metal portion of the roof, is still a September timeframe. We're working with the contractor on a, pretty much a daily basis now for a lot of the details when it comes to, for the electrical and security systems and all of that. So it's still an active project, and, you know, keep our fingers crossed for good weather between now and September. Next slide. In association with that, with the amphitheater is the lower parking lot, and you see the curving has been installed. They have not yet put in the asphalt at this time, but that is, I want to give you an overhead view of what it's going to look like in that lower parking lot. So I do not have the exact number of parking spaces at this time for this, but it is, it has more than doubled the original number of lot spaces that were down there. We are, the overall project is currently over budget, $430,050.54. Again, the increased costs that are associated with that was, most, all of it was from the early part of the construction phase, poor soil condition, underground debris, regrowning of water main that was on the site, poor subsurface conditions for the restroom facility, and then the big ticket item was resurfacing of the Calhoun Street parking lot. So all of that combined, the majority sum of that, $430,000. We are, again, hoping to keep those costs down moving forward. We have some, still have some, a little bit of wiggle room in our budget that we may not use some of those line items that will offset some of these costs. And ultimately, the funds are available in our capital projects to cover any overages that we have. The next project is our Banks Athletic Park. I do not have too many photos of it. It has just been recently cleared, the site has been cleared. You will go out and you'll see some tree lines still remaining on the property. That's due to areas that could not be graded due to, I would say, wet conditions. So they're going to remain on property as they are now. The two retention ponds have been installed, and so there, as of last week, they went through and all of the debris that had been piled up was having ground. So now there are piles of mulch out there that will be removed from the site fairly soon. Then the grading will continue to take place for the fall. The projected timeline, again, is mid-2022. We seem to be on schedule pretty well right now, and with good weather, should be able to keep that timeline, stay within that timeline. The, the next project that we have are the YMCA complex tennis courts, restroom, and tennis office building is currently under design with, with the architect. We're working with the architect and the site engineer. So you've got two projects kind of going on together. The site engineering underway for the new construction of the two new courts, and then we have the YMCA, the tennis court, excuse, the tennis office and restroom facility that will be, well, once we have both plans completed, staff will be ready to advertise the project, and we can run it through our procurement process and get underway with the overall projects. We expect to do that fairly soon as well. I'm happy to say- Um, I'm happy to say that our sewer lift station project that was, had a uh, grant funding from uh, the Rural Infrastructure Authority, has been completed. Uh, but uh, we're still going through the, paying the final bills and, and finances, but the uh, overall, but most stations are up and operating and uh, and working well. So we're very pleased with that project. Uh, again, the, the Rio grant was for five hundred thousand dollars, so we were able to, uh, it was a matching grant program. So uh, we will, once we finish this, we have to take a year off, then we'll come back to them for another grant for other uh, sewer lift stations in town. And then lastly, our wastewater treatment plant, um, the project is still uh, ongoing. Project completion date is first quarter of twenty twenty-two, and that project is still on schedule and on budget. We're very excited about that as well. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great update. Thank you for presentation. It looks very good, nice, crisp and clean. I love where we're getting to on the, um, with the detailed information what's important is where are we in the project and the budget? Um, are we updating our website with project information for capital projects? So, okay, I hadn't been on there in a little while, looking great. Perfect.
How many is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, real quick on Banks Athletic Park. Were you able to confirm, and this kind of leads into our next discussion, but um, wifi capabilities at this facility and security?
We are in the process of uh, making that, incorporating that into the, into the project.
Okay.
Yes, we definitely have to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
How many lift stations total are we looking at revamping?
Uh, I don't have the exact number. I, I think we have, we have twenty-some odd. At one time, it was twenty, I think twenty-six of those stations, and they, they vary depending on when we can change, take, remove them and take it to a gravity sewer. So Greg's not on the line, how it may not be quite twenty-six stations overall. But we do a review of all of our stations and try to address the ones with poor conditions. Um, and I will say the, we addressed that in both the uh, Charlotte Highway Station, the old Charlotte Highway Station, which is now Old Mission Road. It was the oldest station we had on the line. It was very outdated, but still operational. We've just um, actually beefed it up and, and it will last us for quite, quite some time in the future. Um, the Copper Streaks pump station carries heavy load. Uh, we actually just upgraded it and made it so it is, it will take on more capacity. So uh, that's always a benefit for the town as we move forward. Um, so yes, we'll, I, I know that uh, our utilities director Greg Rushing already has already earmarked at least one of our stations.
I thought there were three. I knew there were two, but I, you know, I thought there was one more. We don't know which one. Um, or he's, he's going to identify it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I don't recall which one that is, but I would imagine for us to get the biggest bang for our buck would be the two at the time.
Right, okay.
Taking advantage of the full five hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, okay.
We're going back with above ground lift stations?
We are going back with above ground lift stations. That's correct.
I appreciate staff looking to the future and looking for these grants and being prepared um, to have something ready to roll. Uh, works very well in the strategic planning we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Outstanding report. I would like to, at this point, also compliment the, the changes in Walter Elijah are not just significant, they're beautiful.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know if you went to the movie night or not, but participation, the look of the park, it's everything you'd dream our park would be. Children on the playground equipment, parents in chairs and on blankets, good music. I, I'm just so excited to bring that to closure so that we can use that park consistently. Um, I, I think it's such a benefit to the town, and I'm, I'm so pleased with the planning and execution of the changes to that park. Thank you.
Here's up a question. Um, at Walter Elijah, do we have the capabilities of a drop-down screen for movie nights? Or how will we incorporate movies with the new amphitheater?
That is a very good question.
We talked about it earlier.
Yeah, there was, early in the process, there was some discussion about uh, having a drop-down trust that you could attach uh, a screen to.
Correct.
That trust is not, was taken out of the process. It, the design, the design of the roof would not allow for that. So we're going to be, we're looking now for blow-up options for...
We just sit on...
If you tip aside the stage, but it would essentially, it may not be as large as what we have for the Strawberry Festival movie night, uh, but it'll be something similar to that. Uh, anyone that was present for that shows the movies really well. Uh, it should show up the artist if we've got a camera on him. Uh, so we, we're going to put together and either purchase a very nice uh, blow-up screen or we're working into our budget to contract those out for certain events.
Alright.
Any other questions? Thank you, Davey. Great report. Great report. Alright, um, there are no further committee, no, there is. There's a committee report number one update from Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilwoman Cook will be presenting um, that committee's research and uh, status.
Thank you. So the Parks and Rec Committee did have a meeting um, last month to, with staff, trying to come up with what our strategic planning would be for um, the Parks and Rec um, program that we have. As we look at that strategic planning, we noticed that one of the big areas we needed to tackle first was just the process to getting us to there, looking at levels of service that we have, as well as reviewing our facility needs, um, future needs for staff, and maybe even the timing of the process. So we definitely didn't get through the whole strategic planning in our first meeting, but we did identify the facility review process, portion of it, and that's what we're coming to council with today. So as we look at the inventory of our facilities, we went through each of the areas with our downtown corridor, um, and the various parks along the way. One of the things that we identified was the normal ongoing improvements, um, yeah, uh, that were basically a common theme for all the parks that we wanted to have. When we look at our mission of trying to have the safest areas, safest facilities for our constituents, is we wanted to be sure that we identified opportunities for improved security, which could be lighting as well as cameras. We think both are needed at a lot of our parks and taking that to the next level. We also identified wifi connections as much as possible. We know there may be some limitations with that, but um, would like to move forward, trying to have wifi, especially after the pandemic and seeing people needing more connection. Um, playground equipment replacements have been a part of our ongoing process, but we want to be sure that we're addressing that as well. And as part of that, sun shades, we have a few, I think, but not many, and it's something that this council has brought up several times, and we wanted to focus and address this within this committee. And then the nice part of it is we realized after the addition of the swings at Walter Elijah that we needed more swings, more benches, more picnic areas for people to be individual, but have space to enjoy the parks too. So we are also um, asking for those improvements to be made at all of our parks where possible. Um, we'll move through the rest of it, and then I'll talk about our specific recommendations. And the downtown corridor, we kind of lumped together several of our parks because they're all, we have multiple parks within about a one-mile radius. Um, so Walter Elijah Park, we are addressing a lot of the needs or opportunities at that facility, as well as Calhoun Park. We've also started working to identify, and for the reason um, Davey mentioned, the parking, we don't know how many parking places. We often talk about, we need more parking, but we have to have a starting point to be able to benchmark to know when we're improving and when we're getting more. So that's one of the things that we will um, be addressing to make sure we are growing in parking when there's opportunities. We did see multiple needs or ideas. None of these are anything specific that we need for this park. Some, well, I'm sorry, some of these are specific for these parks, but some of these just sounded fun and something that we think might be nice to enhance it. So specifically for the Walter Elijah Park is Calhoun together. We looked at the idea of needing safer walking paths, um, specifically at the White Street area because that was sidewalks, very old, um, and it's definitely going to need some work. We also talked about the lighting that's being added to the park, making sure that we have electricity for future events so that we don't have as many cords or trip hazards or generators. Um, we want to look and see if there's an option here to add a picnic shelter. That was something that we had discussed as a council, is a level two or phase two for this park. Um, potentially paving the um, parking lot at Loon's Way. It's the upper lot, it's a grass lot, but it does get used quite a bit. Seeing what that might look like. We also have talked several times about dedicating um, a tree from this close, and we want to be sure that we don't lose sight of that commitment that we've made. Um, the committee also talked about the improved signage. Um, this is going to be really the gateway into Fort Mill once you cross over twenty-one, and making this a bolder statement, making um, it, it just really gives it a fresh impression of Fort Mill and what this park means to us. Um, we've also talked about adding either a water fountain or a splash pad. We only have one splash pad in the town at this time, and we don't know that this facility may be the best one, but we also don't know it isn't. So we want to be able to dig into that a little bit more and see where that might make sense. As we continue through the downtown corridor, we also looked at the Veterans Park, the Millstone Park, bandstand, caboose area. Again, making sure we look at how many parking places we have. We hear often that we don't have enough parking in downtown, so we want to be sure where we're at. Um, some of the ideas that we talked through or needs um, was at the Veterans Park where the Farmers Market Spins, having some type of an open-air pavilion or shelter in that area. We've also talked about safer walking paths, um, specifically, um, Councilman Shory mentioned, that upper part of Millstone, there needs to be a little bit better transition to where Massey Street is. We also wanted to look into the history of the caboose, number one, but then the options that we may have with the caboose. Um, you know, does it have to stay in this location? Is there an option that it might move over to Veterans Park? We want to be able to dig into that a little bit more. And then, as we talked about previously, making sure we're doing all the standard updates um, that were mentioned in the previous slides to these parks. So the wifi, um, maybe a sun shelter, I mean, sun shade, that type of thing, picnic benches, swings. Um, as we look at Banks Athletic Park, Davey's already talked about that, so there's really not a whole lot that we need to do with this, this facility. Harris Street Park um, is in fairly good shape, although one of the things that has been consistent at this park ever since I've known it has been the creek erosion that we have. And we want to look into what makes the most sense. Does it make sense for the ball field to turn in a different direction? Or this to become a rectangle field? Um, we want to look at that creek erosion and see what work needs to be done to try to limit it. I know it's very tight on that side where we've already eliminated the bleacher area for fans, just, you know, make sure that that's not a safety hazard. Um, this may also be a great location to add a splash pad. I know there was one many years ago, um, I remember. No, I'm questioning, no, I'm just questioning because I, I think I'm right that it was there. I vaguely remember it.
It was fun.
Exactly, Shala, who?
Was it a pool? Oh, really, with the... So we think this may be a better location, but you know, we're going to look and see, see what the costs are. Um, staff is continually updating the playground equipment at this facility. We know we've had some changes throughout, but we want to be sure that we're addressing those. Steel Street Park, we did look at the assets that we have at this facility as well, with the basketball courts and playgrounds. They actually have a lot of different um, varieties at this park as well. We want to consider and probably are going to do more research on, with some of the people that are using this on a regular basis. I know the Historic Paradise Foundation has been using it quite a bit for the picnic shelter and some of those in state, do they need a bigger one? You know, would that make sense at this facility? Um, so we're going to do a little bit more research here as well. Now we're getting into the more complicated ones. So when we look at Davies Bridge Park, we have a lot of options. Currently, three baseball fields, restrooms, couple of playgrounds. The front three lots that do currently have houses on it and parking. And this is one of the areas that we purchased the homes or those properties with the idea of expanding our parking because we know it's very limited. But in doing so, we also want to be sure that we're addressing the best traffic patterns as well as making sure that we're using the entire facility to the maximum potential. So some of the considerations that we had were a potential all-inclusive playground or at least a larger playground with all-inclusive equipment. Um, maybe a rectangle field, maybe adding basketball or tennis or pickleball or disc golf, um, walking trail. We know a lot of people walk from the White Grove area over into here, so making it a little bit more structured vault path. Um, the utility buildings, they're right in the center of, and it's kind of an odd placement for it. So considering moving it up to the water tower area and out of sight, giving us a little bit more room at the lower area. And then, as we talked about before, the standard list of the safer needs that we have for this facility. As we look at the YMCA at the complex, um, this one's going to be challenging. Um, this was a gift to us from the Close family, and when we look at it, we are already making constant improvements to this facility. A lot of it's been things people have at things, um, roofing and air conditioning and um, the uh, addition of the pumps in the, um, what's that room, sauna room. Um, but we also want to look at what else do we need to, what else do we do to make this a better facility? And there can be a lot of options for us, but there's going to be challenges, and it's going to be more than what just we can make a decision without further investigation of what's possible as well as what's needed. So it's going to be a partnership working with the YMCA, um, that's currently operating it, as well as the staff, Parks and Rec needs, um, things that our constituents are looking for in our recreation program. Some of the ideas, well, Megagym was one of the things, um, just a gym added to this facility was something that was committed by the town as taking ownership of this. But we also, as we talked previously in this meeting about the tennis pavilion area, making sure that we have a top-notch facility for that that's safe. Um, a new main entrance, not necessarily, are we changing it, but let's consider it. Does it make sense to keep it where it is or to restructure a little bit more, more parking spaces? Um, but again, this facility's going to take additional work to be done and additional resources pulled in in a partnership, as well as with the Anne Flaring's Close team. The next project we looked at was the Carolina Thread Trail, and this council's already addressed our passion to move forward with this project through our partnership with the Winthrop Group. So this isn't something that the committee at this time really addressed because we're already moving forward as a council and look forward to the information that the Winthrop Group provides to us in the coming weeks or months. Fort Mill Community Center, this is one that this committee, we have several ideas. Um, our council's talked multiple times, we've had a little bit of funding earmarked for it, but until we took complete ownership, it's something that's been hard to move forward with. But we also, as we move through this, while it may be a lower priority in the committee's projects that we work through, we also want to be ready to move forward with any grant opportunities that may come available. So we want to be sure that we identify what this facility could be or what our needs or ideas might be. And then as we look to wrap up the actual facilities, the Elizabeth Community, um, the town was given uh, sixty-five acres at the riverfront access, and then eight additional acres of what we continue to call the birthplace of Fort Mill, where the cemetery area is. And there's a lot of ideas for this. It's going to be several years out, but we want to start working through some of those ideas so that, again, when funding opportunities come available, we're ready to move and ready to provide our application, similar to what you've seen us do with the lift stations. And then additional needs. Part of the, this is just kind of where we compiled overall ideas to identify what our programs are. Um, the connectivity is a big theme that we have seen as we started looking at our strategic planning, so making sure that we're continuing to connect with our community with the Greenway, maybe with Riverwalk, with the Thread Trail. You know, we want to come up with some kind of a theme. We've looked at the big painted wall, the iconic one that everybody takes pictures at, and you see all over Facebook, you know, love where you live. You know, do we continue building on that type of a theme? You know, do we continue building on that type of a theme? We also want to look at what is our recreation focus? As a group, we decided we don't have the facilities or the land to be able to do sports tourism. Doesn't mean we can't run out some fields here and there. But that's not who Fort Mill is. Fort Mill is more of this walking area, this connectivity. And so looking at something like agritourism and seeing if that's a good fit for us. We definitely want to continue moving forward with our healthy lifestyle for all ages. Our Parks and Rec program has a focus more on the youth and looking that we're doing healthy lifestyle, growing some of our programs, making sure a lot of the areas where putting our funding is for multiple ages, not just one group. Security is a big deal for us. We want to be sure that we're keeping our community safe and if that's Wi-Fi, if that's cameras, whatever it may be, but making sure we're doing that as well as putting sun shades to help. It does get hot. Councilman Helms was talking about earlier how warm it's already been this year and making sure that sunscreens are out there. We also want to continue looking at our current level of service to see if there's opportunities for improvement. And then looking at new activities we may not have. So does that mean adding yoga once we get the amphitheater finished? Does it mean adding more disc golf? Yeah, even a skate park. We're open to multiple ideas. We just want to be sure that we take the current facilities we have and we're using them to the maximum potential. So our recommendation is that we move forward, that we allow, that council gives our staff the ability to move forward with the basic safety needs we addressed early on in the current budget year so that they can go ahead and budget for that as well as getting a plan together for the other facilities. So to be a little bit more specific, we ask that they would be able to move forward with the items in slide, what's that, four? So security, playground equipment replacement, sun shades and the swing benches. It's what we would like to be able to add to the budget for the coming year. So you'll have an idea then what the dollars would be. But then also provide staff and the committee with the ability to move forward specifically on Debbie Bridge Park and YMCA complex to get a better overview of what those facilities could be so we can start putting together some numbers and then be able to decide where's funding available from. You know, is it, would it be in capital projects? Would it be from grants that are out there? Start looking to what we need to do with those facilities. Any questions?
It's a lot. It is a lot.
I was going to say it was a lot and, but at the same time during the meeting, we learned a lot too about the facilities that we had. And I know I've been on for a while, but still, I still learned a lot about our facilities that I'm aware of.
About the staff, a question. We're, you know, the water fund, I know that's been lingering out there. We sent Representative Felder information and do you know where, I mean, that is kind of just, I know they're out of session now, but did we ever hear back from her on anything?
We've not heard anything to date that I'm aware of on that because until we actually have a water access.
And we're not going to get it until we have a plan that we can submit to show what we would use the money for in connection to a waterway. So I did get that from a couple of my meetings with other elected officials. It's an aggressive approach for us that as you move forward with modifications, we will be adding what we're going to do in the Elizabeth Trail and along the Catawba River so that we can pull together. But I think that's a really good action item that I believe the Parks and Rec Committee is beginning to address. We can't really go out and aggressively pursue grants, partnerships or other monies to complement our own budget until we have written plans to submit. They're not real eager to get, you know, a handwritten note on we could do this or we could do that. They want a real plan that they can invest in with that money and that's executable. So, good question, good thoughts, outstanding effort on the Parks and Rec Committee.
And that's a yearly budget or a yearly item that they have in their budget. That wasn't a one and done.
Yeah, I know, but at the same time, it sat dormant with, Senator didn't present, Ray came back to us, to staff.
Tiki K got the money for this year.
I know, but she came back to staff asking for additional information because the person that chaired the committee in Columbia didn't even pass it along to Bruce Bryan once he rolled off. So it, I just didn't want to make, you know, just wanted to ask about that, about that because I just didn't know why that happened.
And the committee's okay with moving forward with getting a preliminary plan for Elizabeth of what it could be. I mean, we've got on here, we know it is a floodplain area or portion of it, so we know will be limited what can be built. We also know there is a different level of service that will be required if we are doing water access. That's way beyond what Parks and Rec will need. It's what the fire department's going to have to do. So we are open to looking at what that facility is going to need in the future too. We've got on there, yeah, walking paths, golf cart trails, because we feel like Elizabeth's going to have a lot of golf carts. You know, disc golf, this would be a perfect location for disc golf because of the nature trails they're going through. You know, the river exposure, yes, water activities, but at least fishing, yeah. Take it back old school. Athletic fields, maybe, but definitely picnic shelters or picnicking in some way. So there's a lot of options we can do here and this would kind of be a third party because we currently have facilities of YMCA and Debbie's Bridge Park that we want to move forward with. It's, you know, current assets we have, we need to make some improvements to. But yes, Chris.
That money's out there down the road.
To the mayor's point, I want to be like what Mr. Rushing is with the Modern Sewer, that we've got a plan in place that we've already agreed to as a council and a staff and we're ready to move forward once a grant opportunity is available. Sun shade, Councilman Shari mentioned, you know, dermatology groups out there have sun shade grants all the time. You know, we just need to have a picture of what it looks like and what our needs are, something very concise and professional.
I think this certainly takes us a step closer to being able to provide to those that are interested in investment, be it a partner, be it a business, you know, they don't, they're not going to invest in a property that they don't see the plan for. So I think this certainly takes us a step further. Just one item for consideration and interest, two, well, actually two. One, I met with Kirk, the new CEO of the Y and our Y facility out on 160 has the highest service level for seniors out of all of the York County Y. So we serve more seniors there than all of the others. And I think that's, that's something important as we begin to plow through what do we do next? You know, pickleball is really, really alive and well, particularly as we get older and our knees aren't holding out as well. So some of the decisions may be as we look at, you know, who's visiting what area, and I know you've got that plowed in. And then one other thing from the pandemic. The Banks Street Gym or the Community Center played a critical role, not just an important role, but a critical role in allowing us to have the parking and the space to do vaccination clinics more than once. I do think we need to take a long, hard look at the monies that we may be getting federally to do enhancements to that facility to ensure that, God forbid, that we should have another pandemic. But I do think it highlighted that we don't have a community center that we could do presentations, health benefits, the types of things with the distancing that are needed. I think that may move forward more rapidly as we envision it as a community center rather than a gym.
I even remember back when Katrina hit, the police department taking on, you know, water donations and various donations that we had at the back of this facility. And that would be a great staging location for any type of emergency.
Because we don't really, other than the gym at the complex, we don't have anywhere that if we had to put displaced individuals overnight, we don't have anywhere. So that facility requires heat and air and a roof for us to move forward and then any abatement of, you know, older construction. But I do think that is a critical item that may move off of Parks and Rec and become more of an asset, you know, from just a facility to be used for community service.
Still don't know where we are with ever getting a deed on that.
Go ahead and hit the deed. You'll have a couple of years on the contract.
When is that, 2024?
But to mayor's point, that, we're okay. Our committee is great going ahead and having a plan of what the facility could be. So that we're ready to move once there is specific ownership and potentially having grants in hand once that happens.
I don't know if this fits on there or not, but one other thing I wrote down, with the increase in bike traffic, do we need a bike rack somewhere in a parking lot somewhere downtown? Because I know that the Monday night activity where they do the ride, it's incredible, the participation levels that they have. And I know most of them go put it back on the car or in the truck, but they are visiting our businesses downtown. So I didn't know.
Some of them could have rode here, so your point, yeah.
We will take a look at that, Mayor, sit there, it's location.
Just work, put it in a hedgerow or something. You know, I don't want to take up any parking, but you know what I'm saying.
Don't go crazy now.
Yeah, please don't take up any parking.
But Davey, that's.
There's 30, 45 and 50 on a given night.
Well, I'm sure we can add that to our overall parks because I can see kids constantly riding down to the Harris Street Park, for example.
Yeah, no, I understand everywhere. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, every facility, being sure that we have, it's a great idea.
All right, wonderful, wonderful report. Any additional comments or anything we need to vote on? It'll come in the budget, right?
Well, the committee's recommendation or request is that staff move forward with our recommendation to be able to add the items that were listed on the previous slide for all of them into the budget. So you'll definitely get a chance to look at it again, the ongoing improvements. But then also be able to start the planning needed for the bigger facilities that's going to take a little bit more time and research and effort.
I think I'm one, one person up here. I don't disagree with that forward planning, actually. It's been needed for a long time, but I also think we have to have an order, you know, for funding, depending on the cost of bringing in a design firm and beginning to work through those things. I want to see something roll off of what's currently in progress. We've got a lot in play that's getting close. I mean, we're within a year, year and a half of finishing up Debbie's Ballpark and Walter Elijah. So those two would be rolling off and I get the.
You mean Banks? Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a big proponent too of doing like the low hanging, like swings. Okay, we could fit swings in a two or three of the parks and then you take one big project and put, and then as that big project, you're still knocking off these little things. I think one thing that we forgot when we actually had our committee meeting and I didn't nearly notice how much of it was in the town until I did the statue tour with the history museum. You might want to think about doing one or two charging stations at some of the parks. So there's a lot of people that drive golf carts to the farmer's market. There's a lot of people that are down at Elijah Park with electric vehicles, not just golf carts, but, you know, cars also. But I was thinking we could roll that in. We don't need a lot of them, one or two at strategic places, but we charge for you to use that thing. And then any monies that we make off of it can go right back into the Park and Rec Department font. It could be a non-running revenue stream for that to, maybe we're not going to make a ton of money off of it, but that would be a nice little buffer to have for stuff.
So something we could shift though to Public Works, or does that need to stay on Parks and Rec side of things? Just because it does get into the whole electric service, it's going to get fun.
I think you're going to, it depends on where you want to place the stations. If you're going to designate it for parks.
You can look at it. So are there any objections to the Parks and Rec Committee moving forward as presented here today?
I think it's a wonderful step forward. I think putting those items in the budget for us to consider with the overall budget is the right step to take because, you know, we, I haven't seen the budget requests for everything else. It sort of would be a little bit hard to, to say, yes, move forward with it in the budget for me. But I think having it appear as a request in the budget and how does it fit is certainly the appropriate path to take.
And yet, other than Councilman Shari on the electric stations, any other areas we may have missed or you want us to consider as we move forward to the next steps?
Davey, I do have one question and it may be Davey or Chris to answer this. The mention of golf carts, you know, this is not something that's going to diminish, it's going to grow. And I'm greatly appreciative of the police department putting out some of the guidelines that people obviously aren't following. And I hope in the guidelines, I saw the intro to the guidelines, I have not read them, but I hope there's something in there about, they're not supposed to be riding them on main artery roads. I see golf carts on Debbie's Bridge Road every day and it absolutely terrifies.
I saw some drunk, some young kids driving on the other side.
The law states that it can only be ridden on highways that's 35 or less.
Yeah, so I, I do think, and you know, we don't have enforcement that can just sit and watch for them, but I do think it is with the summer months and as we look at those activities that would draw people with a golf cart, A, where do we park them? You know, what's the safety aspect of ensuring that they're safe? But I do think that is an issue that kind of cut, that edges into Parks and Rec as well as downtown. I do think we need to put a little more thought and effort into our communications on how do we keep people safe, that, again, they're not following the guidelines as they're written. I see very small toddlers and children hanging on golf carts driving on Debbie's Bridge Road. It's scary.
It's like people walking their dogs driving their golf carts.
Oh, you should see them going over to the Lowe's and the restaurants off of 160.
Oh, yeah. I've seen them at that 160 and Pleasant Road intersection. With babies, with babies.
No seat belts.
No seat belts, no helmets, nothing. Great rapport and outstanding work.
We did a working lunch one day and then we had follow-up with staff and, yeah, there's been several meetings. But I appreciate the committee pulling together and we'll continue to try to get another couple of them before the budget process finishes.
Well worth the time. Well worth the time. Thank you so much for the council members that sit on that committee and for Lisa for pulling all that together. Very nice presentation. Executive session, please note council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. We do have an executive session item today. Our discussion of a potential sale of real property located at 215 Main Street. I need a motion to move into executive session. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. All right, let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session and no items to be voted on afterwards. So with that, we are in adjournment mode at this point in time. My only addition to this would be to remind everyone of the great July the 4th event. The weather's looking a little iffy and I'm prayerful that it will be okay. But a lot of work and effort. I appreciate the continued communication about it. I see it pop up on Facebook and other things and that is such an improvement from the days that we didn't take advantage of the advertisement. So I'm very happy about that. Town looks great. Everything seems to, to be working smoothly. And thank you again to Lisa for the, and the council members that serve on the Parks and Rec Committee for a great presentation. Davey for your capital projects update. I can't, there are. Uh, I can't, there aren't words to describe how happy I am to see everybody's faces in the same room this morning. Uh, it really makes a difference in how we operate and I appreciate each and every one of you. Trudy, do you have anything for the good of the whole? Chris Moody?
Uh, one quick thing, we had the Tech Dowling Foundation, uh, for Fort Mill Schools Golf Tournament the other day. Raised money for needy children and, uh, it was his birthday. I never knew him, but I know his kids.
He was wonderful.
And they're wonderful people and, um, you know, it's cool for Eddie to stand up there and, and pay tribute to his dad. And, uh, we had a lot, it was packed. It was at the Palisades this year, good crowd and atmospheres, furnished, um, the lunches and stuff. It was good, good time, so.
Great.
Two cents.
That's our small town. Ronnie?
I went to the music in the park this last one we had. It was great crowd. Then I went to the farmer's market Saturday, last Saturday and this Saturday.
Yay.
Good vendors.
Yay.
Everything looks good.
Awesome. Lisa?
Trudy, congratulations to your granddaughter for valedictorian. What a great honor. I know you're very proud and to all of those, uh, we mentioned before, all the graduates, but all of those getting ready hopefully for a normal school year. So enjoy the summer and be safe.
Yay. And Jamie?
I'm excited about it. I'll, I'll watch me some fireworks even in the rain.
Get the pointer, I'm all about that.
Uh, it's been a good start to a summer. I think it's going to be, uh, the rest of the year here is opening up. Everybody's coming out and enjoying each other's company. I think it's, I think we're, uh, on the other side of this pandemic thing. I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be all right.
And the Walter Laza is full all the time.
It is, it is. And I went to the farmer's market, not Saturday, the previous Saturday, and it's a great, they, they got some great vendors, great crowd. And then, uh, I think I said earlier in the meeting, um, the history museum had their statue tour. Um, they're not, it's over with now, but when they do it again, I highly recommend it. I learned a ton about the, the seven statues that the Springs family had dedicated to the workers and of the town. And it's, it's, some of them are hidden. You wouldn't know where they are unless you went on that tour. Yeah, it was.
Or you were here when they were erected.
I was not, I was not here on the air.
Yeah. Uh, last thing, I said no more, but, um, with July the fourth, I think it's important and I would like to see some caution on our website in regards to fireworks in neighborhoods. Um, I know people are going to do them. We do not have law enforcement large enough to be in every neighborhood at every minute. But there are quite a number of people that I see on, um, social media that are asking to be courteous with your fireworks. Don't do it at one and two o'clock in the morning. And, you know, please, I, I, even in my own, uh, pick up the trash and debris the next morning. Um, it's not fair to your neighbors to have to do that and animals. If you have animals, please take care of those pets that are afraid or might be made afraid of those fireworks. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. I hope you have a great week.